Glad it's first.
The one on seventh street.
Ross? Father asked me about that today, John.
Much please, my friend.
... United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everybody to this meeting. I'm sure that most people are here because of the new proposed ordinance for the control of pets. I forgot the roll call again. Go ahead, Joe.
Mayor?
President?
First ward, here. Second ward, here. Third ward, here. Fourth ward, here. Fifth ward, here. Sixth ward, here. I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Because we have so many people here, I think that what we better do is have a limit on the time for, speaking of two minutes, if it appears that somebody needs more time, I'd be glad to grant it, but view the number of people present that I think would be a wise move. Also, I'm going to limit any debate, any repetition of a point somebody's already made. I realize that there are times when you feel it's necessary to repeat something for emphasis, especially to refute what somebody else has said in response to your argument, but even if that sort of thing go on and on and on, it really doesn't accomplish any purpose as far as the council is concerned. Everybody wants here, wants to hear your input, but we want to do it in an orderly manner. So this is a public hearing that was ordered for this proposed ordinance for the control of pets. That is deliberately phrased that way in order to cover all pets in the city and not merely dogs, which is what we presently have in the ordinance. And I'm sure everybody is familiar with the fact that that was one of the purposes of this new ordinance would be to control cats, which apparently has become a problem in the city. So I would declare the public hearing open. Ask if anybody in the council first would like to speak. Okay. From the audience, I'll take left to right, first row, second row, and so on, until everybody has had a chance to speak. Who wishes to speak? Nobody?
Mayor, what exactly, how does this ordinance, how will it read? What restrictions are going to be put on cats?
The purpose of the ordinance is to empower the, what we call, used to call, a dog control officer, and now would be, I assume, the animal control officer, to take charge of any cats or any pet that has become a nuisance, either by annoying people, other animals that are properly on leash, or on premises of the owners, digging up gardens, and any other action. All right. It would be considered a nuisance if they persistently or consistently bark, howl, whine, snarl, or growl. Now, all of this would be activity that would interfere with someone else's safety, comfort, and so on. It would cause personal injury, damage to personal property, transport trash, or create impairment of lawns, hedges, flower beds, gardens on property of other than the owner or anyone having custody of the animal, persistently bark, chase, growl, or snarl at pedestrians using sidewalks while the animal is on the property of the owner or harboring, roam with one or more animals in a park, chasing or barking at automobiles, kill other animals except mice and rats, be in any grocery stores or any store where perishable goods are sold, or any part of a restaurant where food is prepared, except C and I dogs, and any other conduct that would interfere with a person's enjoyment of life, liberty, and property. This would authorize, as I started to say, the animal control officer to take the animal into custody, keep the animal. In the case of an animal that stray only, you would have authority to pick up those animals and keep them in custody until somebody claims the animal and pays for the board. And if the animal isn't claimed within the period of time, then the animal will be destroyed. Any animal that is seized for any of the other reasons would be subject to the provisions of the agricultural market law, which can mean a fundamentalist destruction.
I just came here tonight because I have three cats. At least my family has three cats. I don't have three cats. I hate cats. But I put up these three cats because the family likes them. All my life I've been around cats. I have never known a cat that I could, that anyone could really control. You know what I mean, George? When I go to the bathroom, they'll sneak out on you and go to the bathroom. They're very good at keeping mouse population down. They're fantastic at that. And I think there's a lot of drivers around town, especially up where I live in the fourth ward on Fourth Street, where cars like to take target practice at cats running across the street. What the heck, it only goes 75 miles an hour down that road. You know, there isn't a week that goes by there isn't a roadkill out there.
Did you get a copy of, did you get a copy of that article that was up there on cats?
No, I've just been listening to a lot of hearsay. I understand that the whole thing evolved by one family has 25 cats in their family? I mean, that's a lot of cats. I wouldn't want 25 cats in my family. I don't know. They must be really cat lovers. But I think, you know, maybe you ought to put a limit on how many cats you have in the family, rather than...
Actually, I don't think you should do that because those people who are very responsible for their animals can have as many animals as they want to. It's the people that have a number where they can't keep them controlled, and everybody's entitled to have pets. But alls we're trying to do is protect the rights of the people in the areas where these people can't control their pets. And that's all we're trying to do with this ordinance. You know, anybody can have as many cats or dogs as they want, just as long as they keep them controlled, you know?
Well, I'll get back to what I did say earlier, Mr. Lincoln. Cats are very hard to control. You can't control a cat. You can control a dog. A dog will listen to you, say, hey, stop, it stops. You cannot say to a cat, hey, get back here. None of them will come back for you. They got a mind of their own. I've listened to Judge Lottner on TV, State of California. Every time he's had a cat case up in front of him, he's always turned and says, you can't control a cat. How many times have you had them, George?
Oh, I've always had cats. I love cats.
Always have cats.
I love cats.
No, I mean, in front of your bench is a complaint.
Never had one.
Never had one. I can't believe that we've got a big problem in the city. This city's got problems, but I don't think it's cats.
Well, I never had one because there was no ordinance. There wasn't any way they could bring a case in front of me. But as much as I love cats, I do recognize the need for control where they are a nuisance. If you read that article that was given to me by the dog control officer as to what cats do, I was shocked. See the number of birds they kill, small animals, squirrels, rabbits, and so on? It's incredible. Cats are great natural hunters.
Cats are a predator.
Oh, yeah.
And birds are their chief predators.
Great natural hunters.
You're never going to stop a cat from chasing a bird.
When I... When I had a cat and I was, my camp, the cat would bring home rabbits, snakes, squirrels, and she was real proud of it. And you can't stop it. I agree with you. But they, they do tend, they can be serious nuisances.
I know...
I gotta, gotta cut you off.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just want to say, one cat that I have right now, he's an older cat now, but when he was younger, he went after a young bird that had fallen out of a tree. You know, the birds got ganged up on that cat when it was that young and picked it up. They flocked around and picked it up right off its feet and dropped it. That cat is afraid of birds today.
No, there aren't many cats like that. Phil? Want to give her name, please?
Phil Blair.
Well, I know you, but there are people who may not.
My name is Phil Blair. George, why couldn't we enact a licensing fee for cats, like $3 a head? That way, when you tag the cat, you would know who the owner is, it would have a number on it. If you picked up a cat, it would have a tag, it would be somebody's pet. You could get back to them and say, okay, your cat's a nuisance.
That's been thought of. The problem with that is then you would have to have a place to keep cats, you would have to probably...
And what are you going to do with them when you pick them up?
Hire another animal control officer.
What are you going to do when you pick them up?
Well, that's not quite as complicated. When you license them, the responsibility is entirely different. Dale, are you here? Where is he? Dale, you want to explain, please, what happens if you license cats?
I don't know exactly, but I know that we get into licensing, it's going to be quite expensive. And then we're not going to be talking about just taking care of a problem situation in one area. We're going to be talking about a leash law and cats, basically. And I don't think we want to get into that.
Well, the problem here is, you know, let's face it, somebody's cat's going to, perfectly good household cat going over to the next door neighbors and dig up the flowers, right? And you're going to pick up the cat and destroy it. That's, that's unreasonable.
Well, you know, Phil, and you're intelligent enough to understand that what you've given is one example out of thousands of cases, okay? Nobody says this law is going to be perfect. Nobody says there'll never be any mistakes made, because mistakes are made all the time in law with human beings. The point is that this city needs protection, needs something to be done with cats. There have been a lot of complaints about it and a lot of problems. Otherwise, this would never have arisen.
I understand that.
So it's up to the people that own the cat to see the cat doesn't do that, and that's the best we can do.
There's been a lot of property damage.
Well, I understand that too, but at the same time, you know, it's, let's face it, you may be picking up somebody's, somebody doesn't like cats, they call up and say, hey, this cat's an annoyance or walking across my property. What are you going to do?
Well, then it's the owner's duty to keep the cat at home. And I, you know, I wouldn't like that any more than anybody else. Because I own cats for years.
I'm just suggesting to the council here that you consider a licensing. That way you can control the cats, you know who they belong to, and even if you have to levy fines if the cat's destructive or something like that.
Maybe at one point it'll have to come to that, you know, with the rabies potential outbreak, so...
Well, I just wouldn't want to see, I just wouldn't want to see, you know, all of a sudden we're out there picking up cats and just destroying cats because, you know, somebody called up and said, I don't like cats, and this cat's digging up my yard. What are you going to do? You're going to go over and pick it up, okay?
Well, each, each case will be handed on its own individual merits through our animal control office.
And what's our cat going to have? Six, 10 hours, maybe? No, I'm not trying to be cynical about this. I'm just, I want you to look at another aspect, that's all.
Well, yeah, Dale has something to say.
My personal feelings are, if we get into this at all, any animal that's picked up is going to have to be housed for a reasonable period of time. Well, I think you'll find that most cat owners don't want their cats wearing collars or tags. And as, as it stands right now...
Well, if they love their cat, they'll call you to find out if you got it.
Exactly. As it stands right now, most dogs picked up do not have a tag on, but the owners do come and get them.
Well, it's just an idea. I just wanted to kick it out there.
Phil, in discussing this with some of the other aldermen, you know, I think that our intent here is to get abusers of the system, not the average cat owner. You know, we're not going to have Dale going around just looking to see if somebody's cat's walking across somebody else's yard. There's some areas in the city that the cats are really abusive, and those are, those are the, those are the things we're trying to, to address, not the average cat owner.
I was talking to a guy today, he wanted to play horseshoes, couldn't play horseshoes till he cleaned his horseshoe pit out, so...
There you are. Yes. Want to come up, please? Do you have your name, please?
Charlotte Haven. For starters, I personally have never seen a cat dig up a garden. I have, I have a lot of cats in my yard, and they do kill rabbits and squirrels, and that, that really helps me out because they're what's getting into my garden, you know, and the woodchucks and stuff. But the thing is, is I want to know what kind of damage the cats are doing to the city.
They're doing it to personal properties.
Pardon?
They're doing it to personal property.
Well, what are they doing?
Ruining flower beds, ruining, scratching, scratching and getting inside people's cars, urinating and defecating inside those cars, and people have no recourse as to find out who the owner is and how they can claim, you know, retribution or anything. And these, I mean, the cat population is just escalated, you know?
Well, what are, what are the alternatives, though? I mean, you're going to tell people they have to keep their cats on a leash, basically, if they're out of the house, or what?
Well, we don't, we do not want to limit the number of cats people have. We just want to have a...
Oh, I'm not saying that. You just, you know, I let my cat out the door and it wants to go out the door.
Let me ask you a question. If your neighbor came over into your yard and started digging up your flowers and your garden and defecating on your property, and how would you feel about that?
If my neighbor did, or my neighbor's cat?
Yeah, if your neighbor did.
I'd stick my cat on him.
Well... No, wait a minute. You make a complaint to the police, right?
Well, no. I think he had a personal problem. I'd get him help. I mean, why, that just doesn't make sense to me. Just like, I very seldom see a cat running over and tearing up somebody's garden.
Well, that may be your experience, but that isn't the experience of the whole city. You're speaking about your own particular case where you don't have a problem. That doesn't mean nobody else has a problem.
Nobody's got more stray cats than I do. Nobody.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Look, we're not going to have interjections interrupting the person that's speaking. You'll all have a chance to speak, and we'll do it in an orderly manner, or we won't do it at all, okay?
Okay, basically, what I want to know is, okay, if my cat leaves my house and goes in a neighbor's yard, does its duty, or whatever they do over there, and someone calls it in, they're going to pick my cat up, am I responsible to keep the cat in the house or on a leash? Is that, would that be my responsibility?
Well, why should the neighbor put up with it? Okay? Why should your cat defecate on somebody else?
So how do I avoid my cat leaving the yard?
Why, you can find the cat in your own yard by whatever means is convenient. What else can you do?
So basically, you have to leave it...
Why should cats be treated any differently than dogs? Dogs aren't permitted to do that.
Cats aren't trainable, though. Well, there's just as many dogs running around, I think, but...
Well, that isn't the point. As I say, why should cats, or any pet, be treated any differently than dogs?
Well, I, maybe there'd be some way to, you know, licensing might not be a really bad idea. Like, he said back there, Dean, or whatever his name is, he said, then you get into this whole leash thing and everything, but basically that's what we're going to have to do anyways.
Well, we're, we're looking at all options. We're not discarding...
And that way you could find out who owns the cats and, you know, or letting them keep multiplying and run loose. That way, there would be a person.
We're not discarding any options. You know, for example, in abandoned buildings, they're a serious problem, because they stay there, they propagate, they breed, and cats can breed anywhere.
I personally would like to find the owners or the people that dump these cats off, and I'd like to, you know, euthanasia sounds good there, because, you know, just dumping them is not...
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Francis Gantley, and what, we have two problems here, I would assume. I think we probably have the individual that owns a cat and takes care of it and has a litter box, but what percentage of cats in this town are just wild cats that are just fending on their own, that somebody brings home a little cat and her kid gets it, they get sick of it, and they set it over in her yard?
Yeah.
What percentage? And as this other gentleman pointed out, and I know I'm belaboring the point, how are you going to identify cats? Are you going to identify her cat versus a wild cat or a stray cat without a tag? You just, or maybe we don't get them a tag. Maybe you come up with some leash or something that the city makes, not a leash, a collar that somebody put on that say, yeah, this is somebody's cat with a, with a name tag on it. But as far as trying to put a handle on this and not have some way to identify the individual's cat, really, you're just...
Well, that may, that may never be possible. That's why we're having the public hearing, to get some input and, you know, make an investigation as to what is the best method. We don't know.
You go ahead.
Now, you might be interested to know that there are many cities that have this ordinance.
Well, like New York City.
No, all over the state.
East Syracuse just passed one recently.
No, but...
So it isn't, it isn't like we're piling new ground. That's not true.
You know, particularly on garbage day, when you put your garbage out the night before, this is a real drag, you know? Garbage is all over, and this is from cats and even squirrels.
Yes.
Will it be possible for me to read something from the president of the Oswego County Animal League?
How long is it?
She couldn't be here tonight. Um, not very long.
Okay. Could you have her name, please?
My name is Terry Owens.
Okay.
And Juanita Grady is the one that wrote this. She's the president. Honorable George Blat, Mayor Fulton, members of the council, I beg your indulgence for not appearing before you in person, but circumstances have prevented me from doing so. Mr. Lincoln has been changing his stance on the trapping question ever since Dave, ever since he first brought it up. I'm appalled at his deception. I have had many phone calls from Fulton during the past two weeks, revealing that he told each caller a different story, agreeing with those who favor trapping, against it with those who did not. My personal experience with Mr. Lincoln has been the same. He called me, we discussed the issue. He assured me the trapping ordinance was dead. He was not, he was going to drop it. I talked with the Valley News reporter, offering my opinion. Mr. Lincoln called me twice, begging me to call the reporter and say that he had assured me there would be no trapping ordinance. Trusting his word, I did as he asked. Two days later, he was telling everyone that there would be trapping. Assuming from an error, from an error statement in the Valley News that the Hannibal Dog Ordin Jackie DeCrisio was agreeing with the trapping ordinance, he called Ms. DeCrisio and begged her several times to come to the meeting and save his face. Mr. Lincoln, Mr. Lincoln's deception is catching up with him. I found it difficult to even talk to, with Mr. Lincoln. It did try my patience to have him change his mind every time he called. I was offended by the profanity he used and the unnecessary shouting on the phone. Several councilmen have received correspondence that I had with Mr. Lincoln last year. It indicated that we were attempting to solve the problem. At that time, we did solve that particular situation. He kept harping to the council, never mentioning our efforts. I finally, I finally had to inform the president of the council at that time. The issue was dropped. It is my opinion that Mr. Lincoln cannot be trusted and is serving the best entrance, is interests of his constituents or for, or the city of Fulton, since he's, has publicly in the newspapers and to individuals been constantly untruthful.
Yeah, I, wait a minute. No, wait a minute, don't wait a minute. John, just a minute. I think it's very unfortunate that a letter of that kind can be sent by the person and doesn't appear in person to give him an opportunity to talk to her about it and to question her about it. I don't like that letter, and I'm sorry it was even presented here.
May I comment on it?
Certainly.
First of all, you know, I did talk to Juanita Grady. I've been in contact with her for probably over the last year. I did say to her that, you know, we could work out something to possibly not trapping the cats, okay? And then I called her up because she wanted a copy of the DeWitt ordinance, and I, I sent a copy of that to her, and we were talking, and then she admitted to me that the Oswego County Animal Welfare League goes out and traps. And she was telling the city of Fulton and myself that it was inhumane to trap animals, but then the Oswego County Animal Welfare League goes out and traps animals.
May I say something in defense?
It's a double, it's a double standard.
May I say something in defense of the animals? The animals are not being taken to be killed. They are being taken to the vet to be fixed, immunized. They are not being taken to be killed. They aren't.
But you're still trapping, and she told me that it was inhumane to trap.
If you are going to trap them, to take them to the SPCA to be killed, yes. I, I would like to know, however, where the animals will be taken or housed after you do trap them.
We don't know at this time because we haven't...
I have had correspondence with the SPCA, and the SPCA did tell me that there is a $20 holding fee to drop the animal off, and if it is a stray, they will not keep it, they will kill it.
We have no idea what we're going to do at this time. As I said before, we're trying to get input on the problem, and then later on we'll formalize the ordinance and present it.
Terry, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What do you propose we do with these cats?
Fines are not a bad idea, okay? It is not a bad idea, but $50 for the first offense is too much. You know, people in Fulton are not that wealthy as the people in DeWitt or East Syracuse.
Could I ask you a question also?
Yes.
Fine or no fine, how do we impose a fine if in fact we don't have the right to pursue the people that own the cat when we know who the owner is? If we don't have any legal right, how can we give them a fine?
You have to come up with some kind of tag.
That's why we're here.
Okay.
Next.
My name is Vincent Jai. I showed to my alderman, right, the picture, what happened in my yard. Would you want to pass on and show to the people there?
Yeah, I'll pass them down to the rest of the council.
What I should do with the mess I got over there is keep it on and on. Ruin my lawn. My garden, I bought 150 feet wire and put around so they can't climb up, but they've done it for the last three years. I'm not against the animal, but take the situation, what you would do, it was yours or anybody else.
Where are these cats coming from, sir?
Well, this picture down by where it comes from.
That's the old Willamette, isn't it?
Yeah.
There it is. Right. Been put up for the last three, four years. You see how they leave a door open? Also, there's a window, but they kept the clam of the tree, they get in through that window, but your windows left the glass out, so you can get in and out.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what I was saying is, is the problem. You've got these wild cats that are living in the old Willamette building, and these are the kind of cats that we're really trying to do something about, that are destructive, that are wild, are not under control. The average householder doesn't really have any problem with this.
That's right.
The average householder is, takes care of their cats, they, they care for their cats, they're going to see that they're kept at home, and if they're not at home, they're going to find out where they are. Cats that are cared for will come back. They don't stay out very long, because that's the way my cats always have been, and they don't really constitute a problem. And I think you'll find that neighbors and other people other than the owner are not concerned about that kind of cats. We're talking about cats that are real problems, and these are a good example of it.
That's met in two weeks' time. The reason I put a flag on, because I don't want to step on, and I do put a dirt on top because... And I do put a dirt on top because the fly, they pollinate in there.
Yeah, when cats defecate on a lawn, let me tell you, that grass don't last very long.
You ought to see it. My lawn is ruined.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Jimmy, they'll be getting your pictures back at the other end there if you want. I know, I, I see her hand, but I have to take the other roads first. This lady back here, please.
My name is Margaret Watson, and on one side of us, the family has moved out. They've had a cat, and that poor cat has been pregnant and had kittens. They've left the cat run loose, the kittens are on loose. And now they have moved out and left a pregnant cat, plus all the kittens, and there's going to be more kittens. And they had a dead cat in a plastic bag in the yard for some time until the people came and cleaned out the house. Now, on the other side of us, they are on welfare, and they've got three or four kids, and they've got about four cats. In fact, one of them, the cat sleeps on my dog's dog, top of the doghouse, which my dog doesn't appreciate. But they are run loose all over. And, I mean, I like cats, and I've always had cats, but, I mean, these are, people aren't taking care of them. And, I mean, I know people do take care of them, and they shouldn't be fined. But these people that would just up and leave them just to run the city and have more cats to find cats.
Yeah, that's exactly one of the problems, thank you. That article points out, cats are abandoned, either people move away, or they even bring them into the city, just drop them on the streets. And of course, if they're female, they will have kittens. That's how I obtained my last cat.
I might add to that Pathfinder Courts is a, a large dumping ground for, for unwanted cats also.
Yeah, that's true. I'll get to you, young lady, I'm sorry, I have to take the, the other roads first. Seven or eight? There'll probably be more.
My name is Charles Carey. I have a neighbor over there that has a cat running around the whole well. I have a garden. They get in my garden, dig it up, defecate in it. They're running night and day. I have another neighbor over there that has a cat that I never see. That neighbor's taking care of their cat, this other one doesn't. And I have one of these motion lights. Sometimes, two or three o'clock in the morning, the light will come on, and I get up to go to the bathroom, the cat's in my yard. They run night and day.
Yeah, they do. They also howl.
Yeah, they do when they get...
Yeah. Thank you.
Certain time. But I wish you could do something about it.
That's what we're trying to do, thank you. Young lady.
My name is Pali Asha. Um, how can you tell by why animals and house pets?
Wild animals and house pets? You can't really, I suppose, unless you observe their actions for a time. It isn't the point, we're not trying to distinguish between wild animals and house pets. We're trying to distinguish between destructive animals and animals that are nuisances.
If it's allowed for dogs to have license, why can't cats?
As I say, that's one of the options that we're considering. We don't know yet what we're going to do.
Or we'll try to do something.
We'll try. Way back.
My name is Lorelei Hensick. Anyway, I know what cats will do. They'll climb in your son's truck and urinate in them. When you've got 25 neighbor cats, they'll rip up your flowers. I mean, it's not just myself. My neighbor had a garage door open. Cat went in there and had a litter of cats. I mean, it's not an easy situation down there. And our neighbors can't even go out and enjoy their porch because the cats are kind of something on it. I have two cats. I have them neutered and declawed. I let my Persian out, what got out, the cats next door attacked it. Cost me $40 to take the cat and have a shot because it got an alteration from all them cats. Because they don't have shots. She can't take care of this many. And I say there should be a control. City of Syracuse says if you have more than seven cats, you got a cattery. You've got to get a license for it. You cannot have it here. I mean, 25 cats, nobody. Broken windows in this house, how can she control them? There's broken windows in the house, and they're running in and out. She said last year, I went and asked her. I said, "Do something." These are really upsetting, not only just here, two blocks away, people were telling me about it. They're meowing because they're in heat, and they can't, people can't sleep at night. Hey, I'm willing to pay a license to keep my cat, and I think they should. If it's not neutered, charge them $5. If it's neutered, $2.50 like you do a dog. Because it's only fair, we've got to do something. You've got to have some kind of control over these animals. The city of Fulton's getting overpopulated with them.
Thank you.
I, I might add that Mrs. Hensick was an original complainte of the situation that has brought about this cat ordinance.
But, I mean, it was terrible, my son, I have, it's 90 degree weather, you've got to keep your windows rolled up in your vehicle, the sun beating in there, because if you don't, you're going to have cats in and out of it.
You're right. Oh, I had a shit at my former home. And one day, my daughter came into announce that a cat had got in there and had a litter of kittens. We took her in with the kittens, and she was a beautiful cat, she was, somebody obviously had abandoned her. And we gave away the kittens, and in order to keep her in and, you know, keep her properly, I had her declawed and neutered. And she stayed in the house, and she was a wonderful house pet.
I even asked this woman, I said, "I'll put the ad in, I'll pay for an ad. Try to get rid of a few of them." Because they're really getting on everybody's nerves.
That's too many cats.
And she says, "No, they're my animals, I ain't getting rid of any of them."
Yeah, thank you.
Your honor, could I ask Mr. Earl a question?
Sure. Oh, he's gone.
Or did he go out?
Yeah.
Maybe somebody here might have an idea. When he said about a reasonable amount of time if a, if an animal was picked up, is there a time limit for dogs, three, five days?
I think it's five days.
Just listening, I don't think anybody's here to try to determine whether a cat is a pet or if it's a wild animal. I think the thing of it is, is try to protect the neighbor's rights as well as your own if you own the animal. I'm sure that if a cat was picked up and the owner didn't see that cat for three days or two days, they'd want to know where the cat was, and I would think if there was an ordinance in effect, that they would probably call the proper authorities and ask if a cat had been picked up in that vicinity. And if in case it had been, I'm sure they would check wherever cats were held to see if theirs were there. Therefore, only, the only cats that would possibly be exterminated, if you want to use that word, would be the stray cats. And again, it would protect the people's rights. And this whole thing is about people that have made complaints, whether it be their garden, their lawns, their vehicles, that have been damaged. This is the only reason this has even come to light in here, is because of the concern of people having their, their property damaged. And this would give them the right, the same as it does a dog, to sign a complaint. Now, I don't think we've got to get back into this too deeply to find out the things that we've gone through already this year with this council, that for some reason, when it comes down to somebody signing a complaint, they don't sign them. I don't understand that, but they don't sign them. So I don't think that what is proposed is trying to exterminate all the cats in the city, that's not the goal. It's only to try to protect the people that have had their rights infringed upon by animals that do not belong to anyone. Because I know that people that have animals that care about them do take care of them.
Thank you, David. Wait, I want to see if there's anyone else that hasn't been heard yet, yes.
I'm Jane Goodell. And as I listen to this here about the Mr. Earl and all that, I wonder if anybody's ever attempted to get the dog catcher on the weekend? You have to go through the police. You go to the police, you call the police. I call them, there are dogs running loose, we have some people that keep their dogs, live according to the law. These dogs are running through, making the other dogs bark, and all this other big roll, jumping through the flowers and everything. Not my flowers, somebody else's. I called, whoever answered the phone at the police department, didn't distinguish his name very clearly, really, so I could understand him. And he said, "The dog catcher's on vacation, I'll have to run loose till he comes back." I've already told that to my alderman, so he knows. Now, if they're going to keep cats in a, in a trap for three or four days, them poor cats are going to be long gone. You cannot get a hold of them when he's on vacation.
There are Ag and Market Slough that prohibit an animal being in a cage or have a heart trap for 12 hours, so...
Lots of them around Worth Street or something, your ward, didn't you? So papers, I think, I read in some paper, or you'd trap some?
They, they, yeah, but there's Ag and Market Slough, lots.
Yeah, but you have to get the cats out once you get the trash. You haven't got a dog catcher?
Well, no, Dale, Dale Earl.
You go full time with them? You go put them on full time?
Well, what would you rather do, Jane, just let the cats run loose?
I don't have any animals at all.
Well...
But I mean, I'm upset because when you're trying to get someone to drop them...
We can, we can only take it one step at a time.
Well, what's the solution? I got woodchucks in my yard undermining all my buildings. I don't jam that the other day. Every time I go out to open my doors, I got to have somebody come and jack the building up because of woodchucks. There's deer there, there's rabbits, there's everything.
Um, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I understand what she's saying because the way the ordinance is written, it says that a peace officer is authorized by the city to act in the same manner as a dog warden. But are we going to get the police to go out and chase cats? I don't think so. And it's true, who's going to let the cats out once they're in a cage? Even though there's a law on the book? And if you can't identify what the cat's last name really is, how are you going to know where to bring it? And another thing, um, and it says here, appearance tickets. We can't get people to comply with appearance tickets on mowing lawns and getting rid of junk cars. How are we going to get them to comply with cats?
Well, if they don't answer...
It's just going to be another piece of paper that we're going to pass through.
No, Ross, that's not true. They don't want to pay an appearance ticket, then the judge signs a warrant. I did it many times, and they're brought into court by the police officer. An appearance ticket is not, if they're not obeying appearance tickets that are issued by the enforcement, the code enforcement officer, and he's not doing his job and following enough to get a warrant.
So then, if this, if we propose this, are the police going to act as the dog warden? Right, are we going to change that? Because it says, "Any officer authorized by law to make arrests may lawfully take possession of any animal."
Well, that's how the current law is written, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea. Doesn't mean he has to take action, but at least if there is an animal, no, we're talking about animals, not just cats. If there is an animal that's a threat, maybe it's a ra, a rabbit animal, you would want somebody that has the authority to take custody of the animal. This is done in a lot of cities and towns. I wouldn't want to limit it to the dog control officer only because an emergency may arise, it demands action, and if you don't authorize the police to do it, then nobody can do it.
Well, I agree with you, but then they, they will be responsible for this as part of their duty.
I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes? No, wait, I'm sorry. Let me first ask if anyone who hasn't spoken yet wants to speak. I want to give them that opportunity first. Okay, you're not going to give anything repetitious?
No.
All right.
Just like I was saying, in defense of the police department, we have a dog, a male human. And if it gets, he's chained up, and he breaks his chain and gets loose, we immediately call the police department, tell them he's loose, and we go out looking for him. And the last time he got loose was down by where Moore's used to be. And we looked for him for about four hours, and this person picked me up, and we went looking again. And we stopped for a stop sign and turned down West, or Fifth Street there, and the police cars blew a siren at us. And we stopped, and he said, "It has been called, the woman has seen your dog at 514 Rochester Street." So the police were on the lookout for him. I mean, they didn't do a special thing, but they do look out for him.
Well, that's commendable. Yeah, their help can be very valuable. Anyone else? Yes?
Just in closing, I feel that, that by adding this word "animal," I suppose, is what's supposed to do the trick, just by putting animal in the dog warden thing?
Yes.
Which will include cats. I, I just feel that you're opening up a can of worms. You're opening up two neighbors that are mad at each other. Like, my cat goes next door and sits on a porch all the time, it doesn't bother anybody. The neighbor next door was talking to it the other day. I don't know.
Well, you can say that about any law. Dealing with humans too, just because it's a law, doesn't stop everybody from doing the things they shouldn't do. But at least you have a law that you can enforce when the occasion arises.
But you've got a law that you're going to enforce on a person that owns an animal, a cat. A cat, which is much different than any other animal, like I said before, has a mind of its own. You cannot control a cat like you can a dog.
So we're going to let the...
And as far as picking up the dog at the, at the thing, at an animal pound shelter, whatever, if an owner knows their cat is being held someplace and they've got to pay $50 to go pick it up, you're going to keep that cat?
So we're going to let the town go to the cats? Sorry about that.
How long has this city been here? How many years have we been here? No, it's something because we've got somebody over on the first ward that's got a junk building that should be torn down, that is raising animals that should be taken care of and cleaned out, all right? That's what the problem is, right?
Well, you think that's the only place where there are stray cats?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard, the first ward. And it seems that Mr. Lincoln is the one that's the, uh...
Believe me, there's...
Real pusher on this thing.
There's a lot more of them than you think there is.
There are a lot more problems with cats in other areas of the city other than the first ward, sir.
Yes, there is. Okay.
Uh, Burke Slumber is a good example of that.
Fourth ward, and every Wednesday, garbage day, you can't put your trash out, there's cats. We have traced them in the neighborhood. They are ripping the garbage apart, strewn it all over the place, and our $0.50 stickers, if they don't get put back into the right bag, you're going to have to replace them with another one. And it is cats that are doing it because the neighbors have traced it. That's the fourth ward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
This is, this is another woman, who was an original complainte of my problem area in the first ward. This is McGraw.
Oh, we've had it in our, in our neighborhood too.
Okay.
My name is Eleanor McGraw, and I do live in the first ward. And I have been one of the people that have complained to Mr. Lincoln. And it sure is not, you know, just something I lay awake at night to think about problems. I know the city has a lot of problems, and a lot more important than cats. But when you live in a neighborhood and you try, work hard to keep your yard looking decent and pay taxes on it, seems to me like you ought to be able to sit out there. You can't even sit out there. They, they go to the bathroom in your yard so bad it smells that you can't even sit out in your own yard because it smells so bad. If someone comes to your house and their windows are down in the car. My brother came to my house, he was in my house a half hour. When he went to get in his car, three cats jumped out. I have a car that has velour seats, in this hot weather, I cannot leave a window down because they claw right at the windows to try to get in. And my car is totally scratched because of cats that don't belong to me. You know, I mean, I know it's, it's not a problem to people who don't have to put up with it. It's only a problem to people who have to put up with it. You spend a lot of money buying flowers, they come, go to the bathroom, dig them right up. You replant them, they do it again. And you can't even sit in your own yard because the smell is so bad. Now, that's bull.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I do have something to say about, um, I, I'm sure that I know the woman that was being talked about. Originally, she did have 20-some cats. The Oswego County Animal Welfare League did take all of the cats that she has. They stayed and neutered them, immunized them, and she only now has eight. They've been placed. So that shouldn't be a problem, you know? You're still picking on her.
There, there are still other problem areas in the city that we have to correct.
You know, nobody's, um, you are going to trap these animals, right?
I don't know yet. We might, yes.
Is there any way that we can get together? Is there any way that we can get together and work together on this?
Can we eliminate the problems?
I...
There's no immediate solution, spaying and neutering and all this is the way to go.
I think if it's referred to the ordinance committee, that maybe we can bring them in and maybe work together with them and come up with something that'll...
That's fine.
I personally, I think that, you know, the ordinance committee should sit down and talk about it, and, you know, we've heard the public input tonight, you know? We don't wanna cater to special interest groups, you know? I think we have to, you know, have a firm but fair ordinance and one that will stick and one that we all abide by and look by.
You know, if it wasn't for the irresponsible, heartless people out there in the first place, these animals wouldn't be a problem in the first place. We've been trying to correct the problem one by one by one, and we've been doing a good job. Alone, the Swiggo County Animal Welfare League has spent over ten thousand dollars here in Fulton, Spain, in neutering cats, immunizing them.
And if it wasn't for the irresponsible, heartless people in this world, we'd have a lot fewer troubles of all kinds.
That's true.
That's why you have laws, I'm sorry to say, but, you know, your point's well taken, but it doesn't solve the problem. But I'm sure the ordinance committee would be glad to talk to you before anything is done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
Yes?
You know, we will have to, if we pass an ordinance that calls for trapping and destroying cats, that would cost us money.
Yes.
If we had a building that had stray cats, what if we took similar dollars and gave them to you to take the cats away, neuter them, and get them a home?
Yeah, but see, it costs the Animal Welfare League one hundred dollars per cat for immunization, spaying, and neutering, and housing until they're found a home. That's why, for the amount that it would cost twenty dollars to put them to sleep or kill them, let's say, it wouldn't be worth it, actually. You know, they would go in debt. They are not funded by the state. They are funded by donations from people. They're not state-funded.
You know, one of the problems that this world faces, and this country, I think, in particular, is you fear many sides to every problem, and you're seeing this happen right now in the presidential debate. Pros want one thing, cons want another, and then there's people in between. And so what happens? Nobody makes a decision. Nothing is ever done. Nobody makes a tough decision. And that's probably one of the reasons why this city, this country, is in the soup that they're in. You know, if something's gotta be done, let's do it. Let's not just shilly-shally around. You say, "We'll take care of them, but we can't afford it." The other side is, "We'll put them to death." You know, somebody's gotta make a decision to take care of this problem. It doesn't do any good to say, "Well, you're being cruel and heartless, and while the problems continue to escalate, say what you like, there is a problem." And these people that spoke on it tonight are not here just because they enjoy it, they're here because they're upset, and there is a problem. Anyone else?
I'd like to tell you about an incident that happened last week out in Sodas. My wife called her mother who lives out there, and she's told my wife, she says, "Guess what happened to my hairdresser last week?" She says, uh, she jogs a lot. She had her dog out walking her dog and jogging. These four cats came running up. They jumped on their arms and their legs, and they were clawing, herded, all over. The poor dog was so scared, he laid right down and hit his head. The neighbor had to come out with a hose and get them cats off that lady. This could happen right here in Fulton. She had to have all kinds of shots. She doesn't know if they were rabies or what, but this could happen here.
Well, another thing, you don't know whether a cat is diseased or how ill it really is. You know, most of the, I would say, strays probably have some type of disease that they may be carrying with them.
A cat scratch is a very serious injury. Blood poisoning from a cat's scratch is a very common problem and very serious. You say that there is no problem, that's not true. I know a woman that had one once, she wound up in the hospital. Mr. Cantley?
George, you know, not to delay this point, but is this lady brought up, this, I keep getting back to this licensing and paying for the, a fee for to have a cat. This would also do another thing. The people that really, they just got a cat because they got a cat. It would probably cut down on those types of people that really don't want the cat, or, "We just got a cat for my child." It would probably reduce the number of cats in this city if they did have the license, and if they did have the license by size. And also, I don't know what you could do with that money, I don't know if you could help these people with the animal welfare, or defer some of the costs in the catching, but I just don't see any way that you're gonna get out of this with a lot of expense. And if the people want cats, I don't see why they shouldn't have to pay for them as a dog owner's due.
Well, that's certainly one of the options that we have to consider.
Good day to so many cat haters. Animal. This is according to the draft, Animal and Fowl, Article One in Fulton.
Wait a minute, before you start reading from the...
No, I'm not going to read that.
All right.
I just wanna show people, ten pages, try to read it. Animal, any live vertebrate creature. Why not save Fulton from destruction for one year and ban all vertebrae? Of course, that includes humans. Humans would be fortunate if the only waste we produced was that which was from our own bodies. We produce mercury, PCBs, dioxin, many things that harm the earth.
What is the point?
The sewage treatment plant was not operating properly recently for a long period of time. We dumped our raw human waste untreated into the Swiggo River...
Wait a minute, we're not here to talk about environmental concerns.
No, I'm not.
I want to hear about the specific case of the animal...
I have something.
All right, I don't wanna hear any more about environmental concerns.
No, I just wanna say that we dumped our waste into the river, that waste goes for drinking purposes, recreational use, and industry. If we in Fulton have everyone with suitable housing that isn't overpriced or rent is too high, if we have all residents with proper, affordable healthcare...
You're out of order, and that's the end of it. Sit down.
No, I want to...
Yes, you're out of order. Do you want me to call the police up here?
No, then I have some questions for Mr. Dale Earl, okay?
All right, if this is about the cats or the ordinance, fine.
Yes, it is. What I wanted to say is that we in Fulton, I talked to some people in New Orleans today that have, that don't know about Fulton, but they asked me if cats were the two ragged ones, they really did. And what they told me is, is, "Don't you have any problems in Fulton that are more important? Solve your problems and then deal with cats." But cats don't vote, and cats don't pay taxes. Now, to my knowledge, this is from Mr. Dale Earl since he is here tonight, and he can answer it, and then I have requested to meet with him, and the people gave me this information, and he said no because he answers to you. So therefore, you will answer the question.
He doesn't answer to me, he answers to the council.
Okay, then you can have the meeting with me. He is the only dog warden in this county who does not have his own listed phone number that can, people can reach at certain posted hours that is manned with an answering machine when he is not at his office. I do not think it's appropriate since no other township in this county has to call the police. I have been told that Mr. Earl does not bother to return some calls, and that complaints have been made in writing in this regard.
Do you have any names of people who told you that?
Yes, I do.
Do you wanna use those?
The Animal, uh, Swiggo County Animal Welfare League said they have actual letters that are signed by residents of Fulton, New York. And I say, if Mr. Earl can't get to the dogs, then he can't get to the cats. I was told that he keeps the dog for five days tied to a dog horse, then he takes him to Jack Wilson in the Swiggo to have him killed. And what I would suggest regarding the dogs is that, I started the Messina New York Humane Society, and the city there worked very well with me because they liked cats and dogs. That people today advertise in the paper, "When a dog is lost or you try to find a new home for it." I think that it's time that we be compassionate. I always said when I was working in Messina with the people there, and they agreed, "If you can't care about dogs and cats, then you really don't care about humans." And yes, I think there's irresponsible cat owners and pet owners. And in regards to horror stories, I was once, I can match horror stories too. I was once jogging, and the owner of the discount liquor apparently didn't have his dog tied up, and two Doberman Pinschers attacked my, my German Shepherd that was on a leash, but nobody helped me. My dog was hurt, I wasn't. So there's horror stories, there's irresponsible pet owners, but really, I think that we have a lot of important problems if we're compassionate. Let's really get together and work on this. Let's not destroy animals. Let's appreciate what we have and let's make it a better city. And I don't think, right now, with the budget problems, with all the problems in Fulton, I see a large contingent of people here from campgrounds that want the campgrounds open. I just feel that this is a terrible shame, that this is the biggest problem that we have. I'm so glad that we have all the other things in this town for people.
Well, you think that that lady who, how yard makes it impossible for her to even be in her own yard, who has her car scratched up, should continue to tolerate that?
No, I said there are irresponsible pet owners. I did say that.
That's what this ordinance is aimed at.
You know, I...
I just think that there's other ways to deal with this right now. I hate to keep making laws, and I feel like laws are for lawyers to take people to court. I'm sorry, George. And I'm concerned because I've been told that one cat was killed by the SPCA in Syracuse, and now...
Well, someone mentioned that to me, and I talked to Dale Earl, and...
He said it's not true.
No cat was euthanized.
Well, I think that...
Yeah, that came from Dale Earl himself. After I was told that one was, I called him up, and I asked him, and he told me that one wasn't.
See, I happen to think that people are more important than animals, and I'm sorry if you don't agree with that, but that's my feeling about it.
Well, that's okay. I think that there's many, many people, I think there's many people who don't really respect animals, that go under the guise because they had a dog when they were sunned. They did. I have a mother who hated dogs and killed one.
As I said before, you gotta make tough decisions sometimes. That's my opinion, and I put people before the animals, I'm sorry.
I just say that I'll remember, it's voting in election time, what you come up with and what you write, because the pen can also be a weapon. And because I formed an animal league, I also know how to go and get ahead of national, contact national groups, and have them either work with you or take you to court.
I don't believe in being intimidated by that. I believe in doing my job regardless of whether you vote for me or not.
I'm not intimidated. I don't know that you're gonna run again. I heard you not. I don't really care.
That's what I...
All I'm saying is that there are national groups, there are county groups, there are state groups, that will work with this common council to come out with a workable problem that will help things be done. I think O'Call offered to Jim Wright to do education in Fulton, and I believe Jim suggested to me that education may be the way to go. It's the way to go. You go into schools, if you treat them, you teach them A's. One woman was complaining here that her eleven-year-old daughter has shown how to use condoms, but she said if they can do that, they can come in and teach them about...
See, it's one thing to educate people, but it's a lot different to educate animals, and that's what we're dealing with.
No, we're dealing with a lack of education to people.
I might add too, uh, the Swiggo County Animal Welfare League also suggested that idea to me, and I have no problems with that, but we still have to deal with a problem at hand, which is a numerous amount of unwanted cats that are out there.
What are you gonna do, trap them?
Maybe.
Oh, so you are gonna trap cats, even though John Lincoln said...
No, wait, no, I clarified that a little earlier, okay? When I was talking to the Swiggo County Animal Welfare League, well, Anita Greedy...
No, to the Valley News.
Well, no, I had talked to her too, okay? And I asked her, uh, some questions and stuff like that, and she said, "Oh, well, we were out trapping animals." Well, I asked her the question, well...
We had this discussion.
If it's okay for you to trap animals, why can't the city...
Because I don't believe in murdering animals. If you wanna, I don't believe...
Anita Greedy told me...
Where are you gonna take the, you're gonna murder them? You're gonna kill them?
Well, Anita Greedy told me, okay?
She told you she trapped them, and they spend a hundred dollars to take them out?
Wait a minute, okay, wait a minute. You've gone far enough. I think you've said enough.
I wanna know what you're gonna do, how you're gonna get the stray cats.
Trap them if we have to.
You're gonna trap?
If we have to.
And what are you gonna do after you trap them?
May put them to death.
Oh, then you are, then John Lincoln can't be trusted by his word.
What John Lincoln got to do with this?
Oh, wait a second.
You asked me, and I told you. What's he got to do with it?
'Cause John said in the paper, "They have my word." Is the Valley News present tonight? Is Doreen here?
Yes, she is, and I said that to her, okay? And I, what did I do the other day? I called Doreen up, and I explained to her why I changed my stance on it because the Swiggo County Animal Welfare League told me that they trap cats, and they trap cats that was inhumane.
Do they trap cats to kill them?
No, if it's okay for the Animal Welfare League to do it, then it's okay for us.
Wait, that's getting ridiculous. Okay.
To trap and kill. That's all I wanna know, John. I can work in your ward too.
Fine.
From Rockland, Randall. So far tonight, I've seen a bunch of people making moves out of themselves above this law. Now, for one, I know the police department do not go near wild animals. I had to come into Fulton...
We're not talking about wild animals.
We are talking about animals here. We're talking about cats mainly, yes. Earlier in the, in the session, you mentioned that they take, and they will go after the rabies, rabid animals, and everything else. They're in total lies because they don't do that. And for the second thing, I think that the idea of the license is fairly good.
If you've listened to what I said, you would have heard that I said I was in favor of a proposed ordinance that would give them their authority, that authority. I did not say that they had done that before.
I know they don't, and as far as getting hold of this dog catcher, I have tried in order to get a dog, and I couldn't reach him through the police station even. And I tried for a couple of good, you know, a couple of weeks. And so if he cannot be made available to receive an animal, how is he going to, you know, how is everybody gonna get him when they're an animal that's a nuisance, nuisance animal?
Well, that's one of the problems we'll have to work out. Okay? Anybody else? Yeah, come on up, please.
My name is Dawson Hayden. I just wondered, has anybody here ever heard of the half a heart trap? I used to trap wild animals, and it does not leave a mark, or it does not hurt the animal in any way. You could trap those cats the same way, put a little bait in there, both ends dropped down, you would not hurt them.
That's the one that would, that's the one that would be used.
Yeah, that's the ones that we're gonna use. That's right. Under Agamark, under Agamarkas law, we can only leave them in there no more than twelve hours, and we will follow those guidelines. We will follow the guidelines that are put down by the...
If the ordinance is passed, if they are trapped, if they are, if, if, then there will be appropriate provision made to see that they're not in there an excessive length of time. We are aware of that problem. Yes, do you have something to add?
Watch their cars, and then an hour or so later, you go out and you'll find cat tracks all over.
They probably would educate them.
And a few years ago, they say you can't trap anything. Well, I had trouble with gray squirrels eating stuff out of my garden. I gotta permit to trap them and take them out in the country and let them go. People say you can't, all the police, my neighbor complained about me catching them. So the police came over and said, "I heard you're catching gray squirrels." And I said, "Yes, I am, and I gotta permit to do it." They couldn't believe it. They didn't even know you could get a permit.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
So, I, I had an animal, live trap, but I didn't kill them. I just took them where they could go away and not bother me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, the, uh, proposal will be referred to the ordinance committee.
Now, now, at that time, after it's referred to the ordinance committee, it will come back here for a vote.
Right. Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carry. Public hearing is standing, it's closed. Item two, please.
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the ninety-two, ninety-three agreement between the City of Fulton and the International Association of Firefighters, Local three-oh-six-three.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Item three, please.
Resolved, this council approves the following bills. Babcock Oil, Fulton, New York, seventeen forty-six, fifty-seven for diesel fuel. Je, uh, General Code Publishers, one thousand forty-six, twelve dollars for updating the city code. But, uh, above items are budgeted, but over the thousand-dollar charter limit requires the council's approval.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Three, four, please.
Resolved, the city chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to establish a petty cash fund in the amount of one hundred dollars for the zoning and building inspector.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Five, please.
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the final closeout documents for the first ward water and sewer expansion project in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents for their letter from Nussbaum and Clark dated July thirteenth, nineteen ninety-two.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Six, please.
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to purchase a wood processor for his offices at a cost of five hundred dollars.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Seven, please.
There's a meeting of the council held on June sixteenth. The zone change request submitted by Mike Dvvaroski from R-two residential, C-two commercial for his properties, which consist of four lots directly north of Canal Point for the purpose of relocating the exist, existing electrical repair shop was referred to the planning commission for their recommendation to be returned to this council. Whereas the meeting of the planning commission held on July thirteenth, a resolution was passed to decline the zone change request at this time as more information is needed by the commission. Whereas the council agrees with the recommendation of the planning commission, be resolved the zone change request submitted by Mike Dvvaroski is hereby referred back to the planning commission to request more information such as a sketch plan, such as a sketch or site plan and to come to this council at a further meeting.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Eight, please.
Resolved, the zone change requests submitted by Laura Raleigh from R-two residential, C-two commercial for property located eight oh eight Emery Street is hereby tabled for a future county council meeting.
Have you lost out there?
Yes, if I, if I could, uh, Laura Lee, I have a letter here, a copy for you, from Diane Moore.
Your Honor, as a point of order, uh, the motion to table shouldn't be a main motion. A motion should be made first, either to accept it or turn it down and then a motion to table can be made.
You're right.
Why didn't you say that in the background?
Yeah. So, I need a motion on the, uh, request.
Well, what do we, are you, are you making a motion to decline it? As, as recommended by the planning commission?
Making a motion to table the issue, Joe.
That's what I, that's what I read.
Now, Jim's right, you can't table until you got a motion in front of the council. So, I gotta make a motion either, either to deny or rather to, uh, accept the referral by the, to accept what the planning commission has recommended or...
Joe, would you please agree what the planning commission has revised?
Yes, sir.
What they forward to the council?
Yes, sir, will.
The motion, Mr. Lund reviewed the second agenda item, a zone change request from R-two to C-two made by Laura Raleigh for her property located at eight oh eight Emery Street. The property was proposed to be used for an auto finishing business. After discussion, Francis La Frat made a motion to decline the zone change request as presented. The change as pro, as proposed would constitute spot zoning. The Ken Patrick seconded the motion. Bonnie Hodge abstained from the vote and all members present voted in favor of the motion.
Question before the council now is to accept the planning board's recommendation or to overturn it. And grant the zone change. No, we've already discussed it. Thanks, Laura.
Does Joe have a, a resolution for us to vote on?
Well, my, my original, uh, resolution was, uh, that you would either, um, that the, you would go along with the recommendation of the planning commission and decline it. And when we discussed it in the back room, it was discussed that it possibly would be tabled, so...
Right. First, you have to read the resolution, have a motion and a second, then you can have a motion to table, then we can table it and give it back to the commission or whatever.
Right, but the question is, Jim, are you going to make a motion to accept their recommendation and deny the zone change? Are you gonna make a motion to grant the zone change? Because you can do either way.
Right.
So, it depends on which way you wanna go.
Right, I understand that.
Okay. So, somebody has to make a motion.
Right, I, I think first, uh, Dave probably wants to talk to the constituents over there.
Exactly.
And find out, you know, what their feelings are on the, uh, situation in that area.
They certainly have a right to say what they've got in their mind, John, seeing as how it's affecting their neighborhood.
Joe, I make a motion to accept the planning commission.
Motion to made to accept the planning commission's recommendation to decline the zone change by Mr. Crook.
Second?
Second.
Now that we have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Laura, that means it is not denied. They're gonna table it because they want more input. Okay? Nine, please.
Resolved, the appointment by Mayor Valet of Town Kenyon, four oh six Worth Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Michael Egan effective immediately and to expire December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-three is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. I would like to also at this time take the opportunity to express my appreciation to, uh, Mike Egan for the work he has done with the library board. I was sorry to see him resign because he has been a very valuable member of the board and I wrote him a letter to that effect. Next item, please.
Resolved, the appointment by Mayor Valet of Maria Lovelace, two twelve South Sixth Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Rosemary Sullivan effective immediately and expire December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-six is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Eleven, please.
Resolved, this council hereby accepts a quote submitted by Nutty Computers, eight oh three South Fourth Street, Fulton, New York, in the amount of three thousand ninety-nine dollars for a computer system to comply with maintenance of property files to be a direct charge to the nineteen ninety-one dash eleven capital account.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Twelve, please.
Uh, number twelve has been stricken, held until the next meeting, Your Honor.
Your Honor, this is gonna be with Ron, but I'd like to ask Diane Moore to try to get ahold of Chuck Sessler of Assessment Services and see if he can meet with the council for more information on this.
Well, okay, is the standing committee going to meet on this first or what are you, what are you gonna do?
I thought they were gonna meet with, with these people.
Okay. And you're gonna bring in others from the state?
They're going to be contacted, yes.
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. Thirteen, please.
Resolved, the DPW Commissioner is hereby authorized to purchase one tabletop capier from the New York State bid list at a cost of eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents to be direct charged at a fifty-one, thirty-two, twenty grad account. Further resolved, the Chamberlain is directed to transfer a set amount from the contingent account into the grad account to cover the cost.
Motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Fourteen, please.
Resolved, the DPW Commissioner is hereby authorized to purchase ice control sand from Robert Weaver, Robert L. Weaver, Abbey Road, Constancy, New York, under the county bid at a price of dollar seventy-five per ton to be direct charged to the fifty-one, forty-two point forty snow removal account and is authorized to exceed the thousand-dollar charter restriction without council approval on these purchases.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Fifteen?
Resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign the certificate of substantial completion for contract two, the coronation facilities and building modifications project with Myriad Construction, which was submitted by Sterns and Wheeler Consultants.
I'll move it.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Uh, question?
Yeah.
This has gone through Roger and, and Don Patrick and they're all set with it? Roger Parsons?
Vacation.
I don't, I don't have any input on it. I thought that was something that all decided. There some question about it, we better hold it. Motion to table?
I, I, I assume that it has.
Well, I don't think we ought to assume it.
Nobody has heard otherwise, that we shouldn't accept it.
Well, I think we ought to have a motion to table it.
Um, my, my question is, has anybody talked to Roger or Donnie about it?
I don't know anything about it, Jim.
I know we've run into problems before with contractors.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to table it, carry. Sixteen, please.
Resolved, the county council approves the following bill. Fulton Riverfest Committee, six thousand dollars for the Riverfest pledge to be a direct charge to the sixty-five, eleven point forty-nine promotion to tourism account. Above item is budgeted, but is over the thousand-dollar charter limit, requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. Seventeen, please.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of sixteen thousand twenty-five dollars capital notes to the City of Fulton, Oswego County, New York, for the purpose of partially renewing capital notes heretofore issued for the reconstruction of the North Sixth Street Bridge in the City of Fulton.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry. On the agenda for discussion? I have a letter from the library director, Joyce Cook, says that the, uh, sidewalk entrance to the handicap ramp has sunk several inches, making it a very difficult for self-propelled wheels here, uh, to get into our building and ask that it be fixed. This, of course, would be a violation of the Disabilities Act and, uh, something that really needs attention. Anybody have any questions?
Do we have an amount, what it's gonna cost?
We'd have to, uh, soon put it out, prepare it.
It hasn't been put out yet, then?
No.
Is there something the DPW can do?
Yeah, it was my understanding, talking to, um, Joyce Cook, that it's, it's not a big job, it's something that they would just have to fill in some cement and their own workforce could do it.
Can you look at it, Buck? Is that, let me know, please. Referred to DPW Commissioner. Uh, item two, I think that's something, John, that you know about?
Yes, uh, Your Honor, uh, Milton Gross, uh, has contacted me and through his lawyer, Walt Hager, and, uh, he bought some property off the City of Fulton last year when we sold it by bid. And at the time of the sale, uh, we told him that there weren't any taxes that were due on the property. Well, come to find out that there were school, school taxes owed, uh, he paid him under protest, but now he's asking that could we, uh, you know, rescind that and pay a person for that money.
Yeah, I believe it's something we had to before on other properties that were sold for taxes.
The, uh, maybe we should go back though and check the resolutions from the auction to make sure that maybe it was wrote in there, that they were freeing clear before. This is a house on Fourth and Pine there.
Right, but, but it was.
It was.
It was.
Okay, I, I just wasn't sure of that, that's all.
Do we have the authority to waive school taxes?
Yes, we do.
They would've been ours, cause it...
Yeah.
Stand, when school taxes are due and not paid, the city pays that off, that we collect?
That's correct. This was, this was best in a transition from the gas, from the, from the state.
So, I'd like to move a resolution to do that.
Okay.
And I will second.
Resolution, Jim? It was here the night that was done. It'll be a resolution to reimburse. What's his name? Milton Gross?
Milton Gross.
The sum of, uh, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Right.
Milton Gross.
I moved it, Dave Saxler did.
Okay, can we have the resolution read first?
Yeah. The city attorney has it.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's a resolution to reimburse Milton Gross taxes in the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, which were a charge on the property that he purchased under a tax sale under the representation by the city that there were no taxes due. That's the motion, or the resolution.
Why, move it again, Jim?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Carry.
Thank you.
Actually, on three, I don't really have anything new on that unless somebody else does. I'm waiting to hear from the, uh, DDC, so why don't we take it off, take it off the agenda for now? As soon as I have any input from the DDC, I'll put it back on the count, uh, agenda. Oh, is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, well. Item four. Uh, okay. I have a letter from Chief Stafford. Previously had told me that there was going to be a lot of overtime for security for Riverfest. Now, I get a letter from him saying that, uh, the overtime would amount to four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, uh, or rather, no, that was last year. Fifty-two hundred dollars, that's an estimate and that has been budgeted. So, I talked with, uh, Chamberlain about it and he said that his, his understanding that it was, uh, re, requested in the budget, but he does not know if it was actually passed. Does anybody have any information on it?
Yeah, it was.
I know it was a budgeter, I don't, you know...
So, that's no problem.
Right.
We usually include things like Riverfest and Memorial Weekend and the parade and...
Okay. Well, originally I was told, was not told it was budgeted, so that takes care of the police. Uh, Chief, I understand that you had a feeling that there should be some additional security provided by the fire department for Riverfest.
Past years, we've, uh, had a whole... If I do that this year, we'll have to, uh, I did budget for it, so...
Jim, that's my one over, I'm gonna tell you.
Probably between that and, uh, standby for the fireworks, we might play around two thousand dollars.
Your opinion is that important?
I think so.
Go ahead.
I'll move a resolution, Your Honor.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Carried. We also have a request from Mr. Ostrander, the Recreation Commissioner, that if, uh, they assist in Riverfest, it will cost approximately eleven hundred dollars in overtime expense.
I think that's probably budgeted too, isn't it, Jim?
I think you did the same thing we did in the fleet department.
Yeah, it's a budgeted.
We allow certain things.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's a budgeted item.
Yeah.
Why didn't you say so in your letter, Gary? Really wasn't any necessity of even mentioning it, bringing it to my attention that it's budgeted in the first place. Uh, Chief Johnson has brought to my attention a potentially serious problem. The fire alarm system is apparently seriously deteriorated in the city, jeopardizing the use of the fire alarm boxes. Captain John Perfume, who was the fire alarm line superintendent, the only one qualified to, uh, supervise this system, has resigned because the system is in such bad shape and nothing has been done to correct it. And I'll read his letter. Dear Chief, I am resigning as fire alarm superintendent. The latest actions of the city raise sick time time sheets stationed to operating without an officer is only part of my decision. System is in deplorable condition. The main console is way beyond its time. The wires are in desperate need of repair as the alarm boxes. Without the time and money to replace or repair the system somewhere in sight, I feel that I cannot be responsible for the reliability of the system. I will continue to do the station's log and check the interior crew equipment for a maximum of two weeks from the above date. I guess what he's asking, and Chief is asking, and frankly I am too, is if the council wishes to spend any money, puts this system in shape. What do you figure it costs, Chief, to do that?
Just to keep the system operating, there's really no doubt there's going to be put on it because every time I touch something, it breaks or needs to be replaced. Uh, since I took this system over four or five years ago, there's wires up, held up by poles, that obviously pulled from the cable company, so we just put up them because, uh, we had the time to overmove the wires, and they're still presently there today. Uh, the box is hanging off the poles, the boxes are, been hit by snow piles, they have holes in them with the saw, saw's got a hole in it, and it's corroded, and half these you can't even pry the doors open to get it worked on. Uh, it's been that way since I took this over about four years ago, and it's still the same today. Uh, unless I have time to go out there and get the system grounds off of there, uh, it might take me a week, it might take me two weeks, it might take me three, I don't know until I get out there and do the work, and I just haven't had a chance to go.
Thank you, Captain. Chief, you said there were, I believe, four alternatives that the council could consider, would you mind itemize them for the council?
About two years ago, we, John, uh, notified some companies...
I'm sorry, I was speaking to the mic, people back there can't hear.
About two years ago, John, uh, notified some companies, sent some letters out, and three of the companies responded, and they brought some equipment, uh, into the station, and we invited, uh, some of the people that have boxes, uh, to the station, and also the aldermen and the mayor at that time. And they demonstrated these, they're a radio control box, otherwise, right now, uh, the stations are hardwired, they go over the utility poles, and, uh, the new type would go, uh, by radio signal. But it's a very expensive system, you're looking at probably a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars for this. The second, um, way that you could go would be to upgrade the system that we have by going to, uh, a different type of system with, uh, using cards and more computerized, and also that would include repairing the lines, because a major part of the problem is the line, they're just deteriorated to, um, the point where, uh, we can't keep up with it. But this is expensive, we're looking at probably seventy thousand dollars maybe to do that. The third would be to keep the system as it is, uh, even though it's obsolete, there are a few parts around, um, if some parts in the console do go, I understand that, um, it may require having them machined or scrouching around someplace to find them, uh, we can make the wire repairs on the poles by purchasing wire and, um, working at it a little at a time. This is the cost, that we don't know exactly how much it will be, but it's gonna require Captain Perfume coming in off duty at times, he can work on duty, but some jobs he won't be able to, uh, do on duty, for instance, if he's moving lines or taking them down where they're going to be in the way, and he has to answer an alarm, he's gonna have to leave the job and go, and it would be a safety factor there. So, the fourth thing that you can do is to opt out of the whole system, notify the people that have these boxes, give them a reasonable length of time, and just say that the city can't afford it, and, um, they'll have to, uh, send their alarms the best way they can. There are other ways of sending alarms to the station.
Okay, thanks, Chief. What's the Standing Committee on that? Who would be standing?
Fire and police?
Myself, uh, Cook and Myers. Okay, what about referring to the Standing Committee to, uh, you know, find out more about it, maybe report next, uh, meeting? Is that right? Okay.
I talked to Captain Perfume last Friday, I believe it was, and he gave me some information on some of the systems. And I was at the meeting where they had the demonstration on the wireless system.
Okay. Well, probably gotta do something on this pretty soon. Okay, can I ask the Chief a question, Your Honor?
Sure.
If in fact we opted to go with the system we now have and repair the wires, is there any way that a preventative maintenance system can be installed so that periodically this thing is checked out and kept up to date, if it appears that in the past that it has not received any attention whatsoever? There should've been a preventive maintenance in this thing all along.
Uh, they gave me, I think, fifteen hundred dollars for a budget allotment, which, uh, really does not carry enough money to buy the wire, and, uh, you know, the function you'd expect of wires on a pole, and that doesn't even cost the cost of coming in off duty.
What I'm saying, is this an annual allotment of fifteen hundred dollars for that? And over a period of, say, the last ten years, and this thing deteriorated, that was not enough to do several poles a year?
Well, the biggest problem is, is they, uh, utilities come in and move poles, and by the time we get notified of them, uh, they have to move right in there, like, move solar time, uh, process the wire, and see if it's up and stuck, fifteen hundred dollars wasn't, has never been approved.
Okay, what I'm asking is, with this intact, should we do this system over again, okay? Is it in fact, that if they continue to move poles, that we still cannot implement a preventative maintenance system to keep up with this, is that's what I'm asking?
I mean, it's a system now, I just don't have time to go out and get it all done. Like, really what I'm looking for now is time to go out and get the system so it's more reliable than what it is.
This, uh, item three on the executive session, whatever.
I don't have the time to go out and get it all done, if you don't do it.
Now, we'll talk more about it, I just, just a question.
Excuse me, Your Honor? Your Honor?
Yeah.
Brian Patrick wanted to say something.
Okay, Ron.
What it is to have it contracted out by a private company, and see what they can do with the system. I mean, if you're gonna have firemen doing it, you're gonna be paying straight overtime all the time. It might be a cheaper option.
Yeah, that's a possibility, it should be looked at, probably. Do you know what it is? Okay, the, uh, question of fire alarm system, be referred to the Standing Committee. Think you'll be able to have anything by the next meeting, David?
We will try to.
Okay.
I would hope so, it depends what kind of input we get.
All right, will you let me know so we can put it on the agenda?
Yes, I will.
If ready, okay. Anybody know what this pilot's new business intent is?
Yes. I have to put that on.
Should it be on the executive session?
Yes, it has to do with the financial situation of the corporation.
All right. Does anyone have anything else they want to bring before the council? Phil?
There, Councilman, Recreation. How few people here that are here to protest express their opinions about the non-opening of North Bay. These are campers from the City of Fulton, and they would like to let you know that they would like it open.
Phil, we have kicked this thing around, now this will be the third, as I'm...
Understandable.
You have talked with...
Understandable. Mr. Crook.
We have received a petition, you know the city's position, I don't see what purpose that would serve.
The purpose is the people want to express their opinion.
Well, I know what the opinion is, I assume it's the same that you've expressed, that they want to open it up, and we agree with that. We just can't afford to do it at this time. And we are trying to find out if we can get permission from the federal government to, uh, lease the property, so it can be leased to a private outfit, they can develop it. That's the, you understood that at the last meeting, that that was one of the things
Why can't it be opened?
Because we can't afford to put it in shape.
Why do you have to put it in shape to open it?
Because it's a disgrace, the way it is right now.
These people are campers, they're running the camp out there.
There are a lot of camps in the state of New York, a lot of them, so why don't they camp there? Talk to Mr. Crook.
So our, our goal has been, your goal, to try and lease, can I talk, please?
No, no, because...
No, he's not gonna let you talk either, then, how's that?
No, he's got the floor.
Go ahead. What I'm trying to say is, our goal has been to try and get somebody to lease this. We have to get permission from the government to do this. It, the letter that we got from them, or Jeff Hodge talking to them, was very favorable, we're waiting for a letter to do this. Then we want to get a responsible person in who would run this campground, who has experience in campgrounds, so we don't go through the same things we did in the past. And that's our goal, that's realistic.
Realistically, the reason they had the shortfall last year was there were a lot of season passes issued down that campsite. Now, I don't know the city issued a season pass for the campsite.
Can't help you, do anything about it, ask Mr. Ostrander.
Phil, the problem was, the City of Fulton has not been able to properly manage the campgrounds, we want to do that, so that we don't get abuse down there, so that we don't have problems. We want a responsible person to come in and do this. I don't think I'm capable of running a campground.
Why not?
Because I don't have any experience in it.
Plus, you got two yards.
I got a tent in my backyard, does that make me qualified?
There's a lot of people want to volunteer to clean it up and use it, why not just let them clean it up and use it?
Because we want a responsible person to run our campgrounds, we have liability there.
There's more, there's more to running a campground than just cleaning it up, though.
Yeah, there's people camping down there now.
Well, they shouldn't be.
There's tents down there.
I drove all the way through there today, I didn't see anybody down there.
Have you been down there to see?
I did today, I drove all the way through there, there wasn't anybody down there.
It's a, it's a non-controlled area.
Okay.
I've seen them tenting down there, myself, personally.
Did you report it to the police?
No.
Why not? They're not supposed to be there. They're not supposed to be there.
There's no trespassing signs, there's nothing on, there's nothing to say that the camping ground is closed, the people went down there, uh, I've seen campers drive down there, look in the camp there, and there's no signs up saying the campground is closed.
He's right, it is not controlled, and the gate, there's no chain on it, you just can push it with your hand and drive through. He's right about that, it's not controlled.
Barry, would you see the signs that are put up?
So what, are we gonna run into this next year?
I don't know.
I think our goal is to reopen it next year.
I wish it was that simple. We can't do it, we'll try to lease it, and that's all we can do for now, okay?
Is it to be planning on opening the campground next year?
I don't know.
That is, that is our goal.
Our goal is to get a responsible person to run the campground, so that we, we don't lose money, and that person who has experience can make some money on the campground. You know, and it's my first year here, but it doesn't appear that the city has done a very good job of managing the campground.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we had better management, the city could make money over there. Why do we want to give it to a leasing? If you can't manage your campground, how do you manage the city?
You sign a contract with a leasing that, uh, that's easier than...
I don't know, why don't you ask Bush how he manages the country while you're at it, Phil? All right, I, you know, that's, I think we've done enough on that subject, we are doing the best we can, I told you what we'll do, and that's all we can do, okay? Anybody have anything else they want to bring in? Yes.
I've been here for the last two, uh, council meetings about those pit bulls, and I know the last meeting you mentioned that you were going to be working on a dangerous animal ordinance, I know you're, you've been very busy, I can see that from tonight.
Gee, thanks.
I wondered if you were able to make any progress on that ordinance, only because these animals are in my neighborhood, that's why I...
Well, that's part of this ordinance that we're trying to get.
It will be included.
Yeah, that's part of the ordinance, thank you. Anyone else? Boston, do adjourn to executive session.
So move.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no, carried.